This meeting is being recorded.
Otherwise, you can get started.
Okay, for the applicant, James in Hume 323 Mill Road, West Hampton Beach. As you may be aware, we've been back and forth between you guys and the zoning board for a while. The plan had been tweaked a few times. The zoning board last week issued all the variances deemed unnecessary for this project. So now we're free to come back to you guys and continue forward.
Good weekend. I hope you can get relaxed.
Pardon me?
Sorry.
And so I got this afternoon, Megan forwarded to me, I believe these were nine comments from Ron Hill on the project. And I just wanted to try to run through them real quick and then have a discussion. The first one said our plans were generally well engineered. Thank you. Appreciate that. The second one had to do with the 10 foot, the lack of a 10 foot buffer on the south property line. That was excuse me, the zoning board granted us a variance for that purpose. So the buffer that we're showing is the one that we got the variance for.
Okay.
Number three, I want to set aside for just a second. Four through nine actually just seemed to be little tweaks to the plan. So I think we'll have to take them back to the, you know, a little more lighting in the parking lot, drip irrigation, a utility pole, curving the legend, not including some components and consideration should be given to aligning the main driveway at 90 degrees to beach lane. So we can, we can certainly take a look at those for the next time. Number three has to do with various aspects, I think, of the access driveway for the loading area and the dumpster location. And what one of the final comments there had to do with the lack of a buffer, but as y'all should know, the buffer requirement in 19763 relates to abutting residentially zoned properties. And we have provided that buffer on those side and the, the west and the north side of us are not zone residential. So that's, I presume why Brad did not require us to have a variance for that and why we haven't shown a 10 foot buffer in those locations.
Jim, I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, well, that's what I read the code this afternoon. So that's what it says.
Prefer the code and it's in the parking section. Talks about where parking and aisles are. And I thought that also covered it basically, I thought covered anything in commercial also. I may be wrong.
I'll have to go look at that or maybe Brad has a thought on that, but.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that hung up on that, you know. What I, what I am concerned about is, is the backing in and out of off of beach lane and particularly if we can't do something about the site distance.
I don't, what do you? Oh, you mean the distance that the truck would have to travel?
No, sight distances when they're coming out right now.
Right.
And you're putting more in and you won't be able to see what's coming down the road.
Okay, no, I think we can, we can accommodate. I think that's also one of your, well, no, that comment isn't there. I think that is something that we can definitely look at to improve.
And I don't know whether the vegetation that's there now or whose property that's on.
Right. Well, the, well, the survey we have shows that it's both.
Yeah.
Who's, who it actually belongs to will have, will have to determine, but I think from that perspective, we can improve the situation so that when they're leaving, there's a better sight distance, but I don't know how to do this other than the way that it's planned. It's a pretty wide driveway, so there is some latitude as the person is backing out to kind of back out a little bit at an angle. I don't think we want to put the road or across the front of the building because that would kind of defeat some of the architectural aspects. And I don't think we want to put the, I don't think we want to drive around the building either because that's a heck of a lot more asphalt and.
You don't want to drive around the back of the.
Yeah. And, you know, we really don't want we, and we really don't want.
I don't know how to solve the problem. I want to especially want the board to be aware of it.
Right.
Certainly I want the sight distance.
At the. Okay, well, I think we can, I think we can.
You gotta get the sight distance.
All right, we can.
I have a question as it relates to the, do you envision the the garbage pickup truck to pull straight in or back in? Because if they're pulling straight in and then backing out, I think maybe through grass paver. So it doesn't look like you're paving the front yard, but you, you'd have the ability to back into the front yard on a grass paver, you know, so you have some stabilization to back in and then pull out. That may be an alternative.
All right, I see Alex shaking his head up and down. So I guess that's something we could, we can consider.
Yeah, it's really Matt's area, but I agree.
Oh, sorry.
Isle, I think, I think backing in is the way we would probably do it. And I think the grass pavers make sense.
I agree. Okay, so we can, we can certainly make, we can certainly do both of those things then, right? So. And, and the other issues that you raised, I think we can easily handle, so.
Yeah, the rest of the stuff was pretty straightforward. The board took care of the other one, so.
Right, right.
I, I have one other comment. And I got to preface it and I stated this before because I am a partner on the adjacent property to the west. But this board typically requires or gets a a future and I, and I prefaced it as future cross access between commercial properties. That, you know, not to, not to be installed now if something happens on the adjacent property and, and I do have to. I'm currently in contract to sale, so I won't be, have an interest in that property hopefully soon. But this board typically does, you know, requires cross access between them. I think it makes sense and, and, and the board can determine whether they want to actually implement that cross access if and when something comes on the property at 16 Library Avenue.
Well, I obviously have to consult with the client about that, but I don't think that'll be an issue.
Yeah.
We're just looking for the agreement, not any physical provision.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand, understood.
Yeah.
I had a comment, it was, I don't have the plan in front of me, I'm sorry, though I had it here, but there was a, like a mid span pole to be proposed in the front, a utility pole. Is that still part of the plan? Because I don't think that was ever really talked about.
I can shim that with you.
Yeah, I believe we're relocating the pole. The pole's in conflict with the service entrance.
And I think that was one of Ron's comments also.
Yeah, to remove it, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Actually, the pole I want, the pole.
On the south side?
The pole I was asking be removed is a pole that for some reason is on the, I think it carries power back to that building you're taking down. I don't know if it maybe services that building that's on the adjacent property in the south, but if there's no reason for it, it ought to come out.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it served the back building as well as the adjoining parcel. And I believe the joining parcel is now under, underground. So that, that, that pole can come out, I believe.
Yeah, if it's not being used, let's get it out and let's get the lines out.
Yeah, I'll confirm that with the neighbor.
Yeah, that, that property is south has just been redeveloped recently, hasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, then it probably is taking service underground.
Yeah, the point in my original comment was, judging by the plan, it just looked like a pole was being added, not relocated or moved. I mean, if the pole moves a little bit, I don't think that matters, but it seems unnecessary to add another pole.
Yeah, on beach lane, yeah, that would be a, that would be a relocation.
Correct, Brad, you're right. There is a pole being added on the north side of the driveway.
In the right of way?
In the right of way, correct. Mid span.
Isn't that a relocation?
I have the pole, that's something I'm confirming with, with PSCNG right now. Because I believe in order to get the power and the transformer, that pole needs to be put in. I can't see.
All right, well, we can, we can investigate that and then report back.
So are you through with the zoning board?
Yes.
And they have a decision or you're awaiting a decision?
No, we have a decision. They, they granted us all the variances that were identified as being required.
So I guess with one more tweaking, we should be able to bring this to a close.
I think so. I, I'm not 100% certain where we are with health department, which obviously you guys will want before you will give us a final approval, but right, I don't know, Matthew, if you know anything about that?
We're in with the health department and we're negotiating with board review. We're waiting a date for that hearing.
They also need ARB.
Oh, true. So maybe you, you guys can refer us to that now, if you wouldn't mind.
I have no objection to that. Anybody on the board?
Unless we're changing.
Are there any?
Unless we're changing anything of any significance, no.
No.
Is there anybody in the audience that needs to be heard? Megan, can you see anybody?
Um, so there's some panelists, but nobody's raised their hand. So if you're here on this application, which is the seven beach lane, you can raise your hand and we'll let you in. If not, we're going to close it or move on.
I need a motion, Jim, the 10th of the 24.
Oh, let's keep it, let's go to the 10th and we'll see if we can't get that stuff to you by then.
Okay. Need a motion, hold the application over at their request till March 10.
So moved.
Make a motion.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim, you might as well just stay in. The next application is number nine, which is West Hampton Beach Development Partners, 107 Old Riverhead Road. It looks like Erwin Crasnow is here, so I'll let him in. And then he can let us know who else is here for him.
I think Erwin and I are the only ones here tonight, I believe. Erwin can confirm that.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
Evening. Okay, so are we all set? Okay, for the applicant, James in Hume 323 of Mill Road, West Hampton Beach. Good evening. We're here on number nine on the calendar, along with the, the principal of the applicant, Erwin Crasnow. We submitted, I think digitally and in hard copy on Monday morning, some updated versions of the, well, let me take a step back. As you know, some variances were required for the plan as it's presently constituted. We were at a hearing last week with the zoning board on that issue. They have closed the hearing, but they have not yet rendered a decision. We expect to have a decision on that at their, at their March meeting. And as you may recall, the variances we're looking for relate to the overall size of the, the building and the rear yard setback of the building. Subsequent to that, we submitted for you guys, a couple of different things, a site plan rendering and also the canopy elevations and the store elevations with height information provided. We I'll talk about it in a minute. We have not chosen, we have not changed the dumpster location in that new submission and I'll, I'll talk in a few minutes about why that is or was and let's see what else. There was a question about not having yellow ballards in front of the building and I believe, Erwin, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're going to be black or gray to match the.
They're gonna, they're gonna be black to match. I think the windows are a black anodized aluminum, so they're gonna be black, but since there's no curb, they're really there for safety reasons. So even with the curb, they decided that they're putting them in in their stores because people have driven through by accident. So they would be happy to do them in black or if you prefer another color, but they're necessary for safety reasons.
That's, that's what that is. And as I indicated, well, let me, if it's all right, I will bring up the okay, so this is an enhanced site rendering of the overall site. And we're proposing a dumpster, we proposed and continue to propose a dumpster location here. It's a full 214 feet, I think the engineer said, from the street. We talked to the engineer about moving it behind or moving it somewhere else. And obviously that requires more asphalt, more corners to be turned to, to get to it and things like that, you know, obviously a straight in and straight out is, is useful for the flow of traffic and the, the use of the facility. The, the issue seemed to be, in our mind, anyway, the issue seemed to be not so much its location, but its appearance at whatever location it was placed. And I think that I had, I know that I had submitted a photograph of a similar enclosure at another 711, showing that the facade of the enclosure itself would match the construction of the, of the the, would match the building foundation. So it will, will look more like a part of the building. It will have very heavy duty doors. I think you said steel doors, Erwin, is that correct?
I, I don't think that, I think, I don't think they're steel, Jim, I think because of the weight, I think they were like a six inch thick type plastic.
Right.
We can, but I don't think, because I actually went and took a picture of one the other day. I don't think they're steel, but they're not like.
But they're attractive.
Fencing and then they don't have, they don't have slats in them. They're very, they're very heavy duty. They're solid. They close nicely. And they have pins in the ground for when they're open and for when they're closed. And again, if you share the pictures, I think they should be acceptable.
Okay, I'll, I'll pull that up in just a minute. But as you can see from this drawing, the site and the, the dumpster location specifically is significantly landscaped behind, along the side, in front. And if you're out here on the road, you're looking through, you're looking through the street trees, the canopy and all kinds of other stuff before you even begin to see whatever the dumpsters look like. And it would certainly our goal to make sure that when these are built, that they are maintained to continue to look and function and, and be a clean and neat location with the dumpsters safely contained within the, within the within this structure. So it's.
And with no additional structures added later on, I mean, most of the time we see that these 711s wind up erecting little cottages in the back there to keep things inside. A lot of times there's spillover, the gates aren't always closed. But then there's stuff that's left in front of these gates. Anthony, can we add a statement to the impending approval to make it clear that we want nothing outside of these gates and we'd like them closed when they're not in use?
That would be agreeable to us, but.
Yeah, I don't see why not. Why, why?
I'm not looking for an opportunity to give code enforcement something to do. And that was the idea of having them around the side a little bit more without them being visible. And we don't want to add any more burden to the code enforcement people. But short of that, having a statement in the, in the approval would probably be the best thing to do.
Be in the approval and the covenants, Rob.
Well, where is it best suited, Anthony?
Both, because anything in the covenants ends up in the approval as well. So it's just a matter of like double notice so that any future owners are aware.
Does anybody on the board have anything to comment on this?
Well, the, the key, Rob, I mean, I, from, from my perspective, I mean, I, I was a little dubious about moving it around the back just because I thought logistically it was going to be difficult to do. So I think this is from a functional perspective, probably the best way to do it. But as you noted, the, the key is going to be maintenance and enforcement of making sure it doesn't fall into disrepair like they tend to do. It's a, it's a dumpster. You know, so who, nobody's really too particularly concerned about that. So to the extent that we can put those statements and that would obviously be great. The other thing I noted, and I think Ron had commented on this, that unless, you know, it has nothing to do with dumpsters, the the in and out on County Road 31, I thought we were going to have a right turn out only.
That's certainly what I look for.
Yeah, I think that's true. I think we'll, we'll.
And a right turn in only, I think we were trying to prevent, right, Ron, we didn't want left turns from northbound traffic either.
Right in, right out, preferable. I'm not, I don't think a left turn in is a, a big deal one way or the other. The left turn out, I believe is. So definitely no left turns out.
So, all right, so tell, tell me again, I'm, I'm sure that we will do it, but just.
No, no. Just no left turns out will be all right.
On the county, on the, on the Old Riverhead Road.
Yeah, from the, from the north, from the north.
Yep.
Entrance.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get that note added to the.
Ron had mentioned that earlier to us and I told him we were agreeable to that. It was, that's why we wanted to have the south entrance. So it was, took it away further for the railroad track and it made it easier for somebody to make a left turn. So as far as no left turn out of the north entrance, we, we're fine with that. We did this to kind of show you more the landscaping and the dumpster as opposed to the traffic flow. It was the concentration on getting this redone with the smallest sized building, just having it amended.
Now, Ron, what do, what are you physically looking for in that design? It's not simply going to be striping and no left turn, right? It's going to be designed to prevent that no left turn, right?
I would like to see a hard, a hard island, maybe a softer radius coming out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd definitely like to see an island there.
Okay.
But we'll, you know, they'll have to work it out with Suffolk County, which will really dictate what, what it is, but I would like to see a hard island.
Right, well, we were amenable before. I apologize, we hadn't noted it. You know, obviously, when all is said and done and we've been everywhere and gotten all the approvals we need, we'll be submitting a, a final set, a site plan set that can be, you know, reviewed carefully to make sure that we're, we include all of those conditions.
A couple of other little comments as well, based on what we talked about today. The parking spaces, since you're putting ballards out front, you need 18 feet from the, from the ballard.
Okay.
You may want to detail how, what a parking space with a ballard is going to look like. I don't, I don't disagree with it. I've seen enough 711s whacked. Just make sure there's enough space. It shouldn't be a problem. You got 35 feet between the parking spaces and the pumps. So I think you're fine with that.
Right.
The other thing is when you finally do put a more detailed set of plans and make sure that we have good details on the fencing around the dumpster. We'll want to understand what.
All right, well, the, the, the surround on the dumpster is going to be more of a wall than it is a fence, but we'll, we'll.
Whatever it is.
Yeah.
Detail it.
Okay.
I don't have anything else now.
He may want to add that dumpster to the elevations on the next go around.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Sure.
And then I, I have a, I have issues with ballards generally, but I understand where you, where you're going with this, but they, they tend to fall into disrepair as they get hit and nicked and whatnot. And I don't want to see them turn into, you know, big sticks out of the ground with missing paint and whatnot. So to the, again, another maintenance really issue than more than anything else.
They make them now with a vial cover. It slips over. And if they get whacked, you can just replace the cover, I think.
That's a good point.
Writing that down.
Then they just have to be replaced.
Yes.
Can we add that to the topic of the covenant?
I just, I, the, the one, the gas station at exit 70 off the expressway, Pat, for a couple of years and they, they seem to be holding up.
Well, as somebody pointed out, 711 fronts seem to attract more invaders than anybody else.
Drive through confusion.
The one downtown in the village has been hit at least.
Absolutely.
Just on that, Jim, the elevations that we're looking at, that's the color palette that we're looking at?
Uh, yes, I believe so. That's is that what you're looking at, I believe?
What'll it look like with ballards?
You read my mind. Yeah, if you, if you're going to add the dumpster enclosure, shove a couple of ballards in there so we know what they're going to look like to.
Okay. I can do that.
Does anybody else have any comments? So is there anybody in the audience who needs to speak to this?
Um.
Are we, are we going to talk about the, the canopy? You submitted elevations of the canopy.
Well.
Well, I was, I was. I was wondering whether we were in a position maybe to send it over to ARB and let them say what they have.
I just, if I may.
Go.
Please. You know, just so you're consistent with your review, the recent review of a canopy down on the other end, Montauk Highway, that canopy was 74 feet wide. And this one is approximately 120 feet wide, if not more. Uh, and the approvals on that, you wanted some reverse gables and the pitch of the roof being more consistent with the building and all those types of things were incorporated into that approval. And the, those were done in order to break up the mass associated with that canopy. This canopy is probably, you know, substantially larger. I would think that you would make the same finding as you would on that application.
So what's your suggestion, Kyle? We were adding gables to the ends and to the.
I think, I think, I think the pitch of the roof, the thing is, is actually less height than that, but you know, it's not even coming close to what the height of, the maximum height of a, a structure in that zone is. I would think you'd try to keep the design similar to what you had down there, at least keep to the minimum design standards that you just imposed on that one, on this one.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought because, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about masking the view of this canopy and building from the street to the extent that you asked us to do all kinds of streetscape and, and other landscaping. And so, you know, we've kept the canopy with a low profile.
Yeah, but the architectural detail is kind of, you know, is not consistent with what's being proposed, although you, you tried to put the same facade treatment on there. You know, it's a, it's basically a low pitched roof. I think it should really be more consistent, exact same findings you made down the street within the last six months.
I agree with Kyle. I think we could do a little, little better on this canopy.
I mean, and, and we have examples. I mean, I presented those examples, those, those examples at the last, for canopies that have been proved on the east end. We can, I can submit those again to the board so for their consideration, share them with the applicant.
We'd appreciate that, Kyle. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I think we can do a little bit better on this canopy.
Yeah, it's.
Get it to coordinate with the building a little better. I mean, this isn't the same.
Right, but we'll, we'll take a look and we'll, we'll come back and tell you, tell you what we, I think we can, how we can help in that regard.
So we get an elevation that actually includes these canopies from a street view. Now that we've settled pretty much on the building, the glass is, is a real improvement. Having more glass is an improvement. But maybe we can, um, let Kyle send you these concepts. And maybe we can get a streetscape kind of scenario where we've got a, I think you've done most of the legwork on that already.
Right, right. Well, I, I think we, we will look at the canopy and maybe we can talk again about the canopy itself, and then once we get a little closer to understanding what it is we all want to do, then we can, we can show a streetscape, I think.
I think the last groupscape we had with the smaller buildings showed this canopy in it. I mean, I'm sure Jim can put it up again. I think the only difference was, um, the color was on the, um, was originally the white tan color, and then you asked us to do a gray color, but I think the canopy was pretty much the same. Um, Kyle, are you asking for much steeper pitch in the roof and a much higher, bigger roof as opposed to the lower profile?
Please, Kyle. I guess we lost Kyle.
Looks like he's muted. He's still here, though.
All right, I was, I didn't realize, I was looking at a document, and I didn't realize that was, yes, I'll shoot this over to you guys, uh, and you guys can respond at the next meeting.
Okay, that'll be perfect. So I, I, as much as I'd love to go see the ARB, we probably need to work this final detail out before we, uh, we do that. Um, the other place, I, I want to put on the radar, the other place we need to go back to at some point is the trustees. Um, we have a, um, a special permit application pending with them since May of last year, I think. Um, and I think they referred it to you for input or comment. Um, but at some point, we need to go back to them as well, and I think you need to send them something so that we can do that.
If we go down the list, it says we still need the Board of Trustees. Um, do you need any variances?
Yeah, we, we, the variance hearing was closed last week, so.
Oh, that's right. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, Department of Health, obviously, Suffolk County DPW and Planning Commission also.
Okay, we have, DPW has, we have a letter from DPW saying that they, um, that the curb cuts that we propose are acceptable. Suffolk Planning, I think you need to refer that to them, don't you?
Yeah, but I guess we have to wait. Brad, do, do, we want to wait until they, um, work out the kinks of the layout, or is everybody good with the layout? Now you're just working on the rest of it. I think that's kind of.
I think, I think it seems to me that all we're, what we're talking about now is the architecture of the canopy. I don't think the county is gonna care about that aspect.
All right, so we'll, I'll refer it next week, and I get back.
That's okay, I mean, I'm.
I, I, yeah, I think.
I refer to the chairman, but.
I think, uh, unless I'm misreading things, I think we have a general agreement on the site plan aspects of the locations of this and that, and just to tweak a couple of things we talked about today, so I, unless somebody, unless I'm missing something, I think we should be able to do that at this point.
Well, if you go into the county, you know, we want to restrict that left turnout. Plan doesn't show that currently.
Well, I was including that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll submit a plan.
On, on the other hand, I don't think you have to go to the county right now. That, that's usually a two thirty-nine F, uh, procedure, and that doesn't have to happen until after the planning board makes a decision.
But I think they're talking.
County's thinking, but you don't have to go back to them now.
Yeah, but Ron, I think he's talking about the Suffolk County Planning Commission.
That he has, yeah, that has to be done, not DPW.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure it's gonna be a local determination, but you still gotta go.
And then secret, we decided it was a type two?
Yeah, because we reduced the size of the building.
Okay.
To below four thousand.
Okay.
That was, is, yeah, is the, um, are the trustees gonna care, care about, um, the, what we finally decide about the canopy? Can, can you send a general sense that this layout works, and so we can go back and talk to them?
Dave, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, uh, well, I'm curious, uh, from, uh, from Tony's perspective, what he's thinking.
I think you should have, I think you should nail down the, the, this final design.
I think with the trustees, since it's a special exception, I, I think we really need to have the, you know, maybe not the fine details, but the broad strokes kind of agreed to and, and narrowed down.
All right. We'll come back, we'll come back on the tenth, and hopefully we'll get closer to that.
Can I ask a question? Is the diff, when you say the broad strokes, isn't the only difference now with the quote broad strokes as to how we, um, modify the canopy? I mean, it's still.
Well, that and the traffic flow has got to be addressed, or when, I mean, that's got to be on there too. We've got to demonstrate to the trustees that we looked at that way, the traffic was going to enter and exit the site. I mean, the canopy is one thing, but that's, that traffic flow is crucial.
The trustees don't have any jurisdiction over the canopy. They have jurisdiction over the accessory use. So.
Okay.
That little part of it, you can still continue to review the canopy, the traffic flow, uh, and we're still refer over the special permit on the accessory use to the trustees. I, I don't, I'm not expressing a preference for it, but, um, I, you know, those, those two things don't necessarily have to be exclusive.
I, but for my, um, I'm just looking at from a big picture item. I, I just don't know. My, my preference and my sense is the trustees may want some at least preliminary feeling from us, you know, or as to what it's gonna really look like.
I agree.
Even, even though it's not part of their purview, I, I, I just have, my gut tells me that the, that they will want some, they're gonna want to know that this is what it's pretty much gonna look like when they start doing that. That's my.
They should definitely have an interest in that. I agree with Dave.
Fair, well, and. From an overall impact standpoint, that, that may make more sense even for the applicants, would be to get that, that kind of input from the planning board over to the trustees. It may even help them in their presentation.
So why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we, uh, put this over to the tenth of March? And we'll do our best to, uh, um, meet these final requirement, the, well, I don't want to call them final, the, you know, the, the stuff that we're talking about tonight, and then maybe we can, uh, talk about this again on the tenth.
That sounds reasonable to me.
I make a motion, we hold.
Uh, just one, one more thing, one more thing before we go on Ralph, just it came to my mind, and it's probably something that, it's more Brad's purview, uh, just in terms of, uh, you know, my, our collective experience has been that we tend to see a lot of outdoor displays, you know, with these in the front, you know, you know, firewood, whatnot, you know. I just, you know, Brad, is that gonna be, that would be covered, um, is that part of the site plan process, so that we could put some sort of restrictions?
It could, it could be part of the site plan plus, process, but the, we, they also have another mechanism where they go to the trustees for the temporary outdoor storage, which then gets referred back to you all, but if that's, um, if it's something, you know, through the site plan, set, site plan process, you, you could uh, definitely, you know, consider that or condition it or have limits or what have you, but, uh, they, they do have the ability to, you know, approach the trustees for, for the temporary outdoor storage.
Tony, which is the best way to do this from our collective perspective? I don't want to handcuff the applicant, you know, indefinitely, but I do want to have some, we should have some ability to restrict the, uh, the proliferation of any exterior displays or whatnot. Just, they just tend to happen.
So then restrict them.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kyle.
DNR.
We'd like to keep this.
You know, it, it's not a big deal, Dave. You, you, you just make the, you make the determination and you're included as a condition, and it'll be included as part of the covenants. I don't think that's such a big deal.
Now, if that covenant exists, does that preclude us from making an application for the temporary, uh, outdoor? Yes. Okay, I, I, I don't know whether this is something of interest or not, but I, I just want to understand the entire question.
Right, I think, I think part of the, part of the point is to, if, if you want to have stuff outside, you ask for it now as part of the site plan process. I mean, we, we've had that a couple of times where people come back and come back and come back with many modifications to their site plan because they want to have outdoor storage, and we do that with true value a couple of times, and it gets a little, a little tedious, like, do it now, if that's what you want, otherwise.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll have an answer about that. We'll try, try to have an answer about that by the tenth. The, the way it's set up now, it's, it doesn't look like there's any room because you have, you'd be blocking the sidewalk, um, but then, again, I know the, uh, stacks of water has probably saved someone some harm a few weeks ago when the, uh, last time the settlement got driven through, then the waters kind of absorbed a lot of the, uh.
I got a question. I have a question. What do you do about the other seven elevens that put their stuff outside? Uh, you know.
Not our problem, not our issue.
Okay.
And, and just one more thing, Brad, the, the, uh, we had the same problem with the Valero was, uh, with the proliferation of the, the signs that tend to go inside the windows, that cover the windows, turn the windows, the giant ads, like, that's gonna be covered as far as the sign application?
Oh, yeah, no, the, the, those, none of those things are permitted. I mean, there, there are some some existing nonconformities that we have some property owners who are in the process of this, uh, going through site plans that we've, we figured, let them get to the end of that and get their permits, and we we don't expect to see these, um, you know, legacy nonconformities to continue, once, once we have a site plan that's approved, they have covenants, they, it's all built to the current code and conditions of their site plan approval, so, yeah, you won't see these, uh, signage wraps like, like you are now at that, at that site, once, uh, once we're underway. Um, this site would be the same thing, they'd be subject to the, the sign code. It's a lot easier to enforce sign code on, on newly developed properties, because they've, you know, developed them in accordance with the code, thanks to, to you people, so, um, there definitely are some of those things throughout the village that we'd like to see cleaned up as they get redeveloped.
Well, what, what do we, on this project, if seven eleven wants to sell some firewood, what do they do? They don't want to put the firewood in the building.
Right there. We could go out on the street, we could stand on the side of the street, and so, kidding, kidding.
Little shed.
I would stand a nickel, a nickel, a piece of wood.
I think, you know, I think we're all on the same page, that this is a gateway topic. Certainly Kyle's made it abundantly clear, and I think we are all progressing with the same notion of an appreciation that this is the entrance to our village. So perhaps the normal seven eleven mode, um, wouldn't be appropriate at this site. I mean, I don't really think you need to s- sell firewood off the curb, um, at this particular location, and it's arguable whether the other ones should be doing it, right, that, that's something we should all be looking into um, after we get through with this process.
Okay.
Uh, no, I think we've dumped enough in Jim's lap today.
Can we, can we adjourn this to the tenth, please?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time and input.
All right, so the next application is, uh, number ten, Hampton Synagogue, thirteen fifteen Brook Road. I see Frank Lombardo is in attendance, and then he can let me know who else is here with him. Just trying to let him in. I'm trying to let Frank in, but it's not, yeah, I don't know if he's not accepting it or what's going on. All right, well, um, Frank's in attendance, listening, if he can hear us. Mike, Frank, can you raise your hand? For some reason, it's not letting you in. I don't know, um, we have, we, we have this secret that Kyle sent over for you guys to adopt, and I don't know if there's anything else we have to do, but you can get started without him, I guess.
So we have a neg, neg deck to.
Neg deck, I don't, I don't think we have anything else cooking. I mean, I think that's all we had. Uh, I don't know if Kyle, uh, Kyle or Ron, did we have any details outstanding? Brad, anything?
I didn't. Brad, you had anything?
No, I think everything was cleaned up last, last time.
So then I'll make a motion to accept the neg deck as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So, decision?
Hey, uh, can you hear me at all?
Oh, yeah.
I couldn't get Jimmy's, uh, drawing off my screen, that's why I couldn't get on. Uh, hold on, uh.
I'm wondering, my wifi connection here isn't that great, so I'm wondering if maybe because my connection isn't good, people are having a hard time, but, sorry.
Okay, uh. Can you hear me at all?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, every, uh, a- as, as I heard in the background, yeah, every, everything has, I noticed the secret has been, uh, uh, granted, uh, the only thing we need is a copy of it for the Department of Health, uh, if that could be sent to, uh, Bo, that would be terrific, and we're just waiting for the Department of Health. I think everything else we have, uh, addressed, uh, and it appears so from what I've heard in the background.
Uh, I think you've, I think you've nailed it on the head.
Okay, good. Can, can we, uh, adjourn until March tenth? Is it possible?
Do you think you're gonna get Health Department, brother?
Well, Rabbi seems to think we are, so I, you know, I, he might, he might have some connection that I don't have.
He must have a pretty thick rug. Well.
So we'll make a motion to hold you over till March third?
Then.
March ten.
And, yeah.
March tenth, I'm sorry.
Second.
That sounds good.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, thank you all.
Good evening.
Um, all right, so the next application is number eleven, Country Point at West Hampton Beach, forty-four and sixty Depot Road. Vince Pizzoli, um, submitted a request to hold it over till March tenth, because they're still waiting on the Department of Health. I do see that his office is logged in, so I don't know if they have an update. Paulina, do you want to, uh, let me promote her as a panelist just to see, but I mean, I told the neighbors that they were holding it over, so a lot probably might not be in attendance, so I don't know how much of a conversation we should have.
Hey, Megan, I'm just here to watch, nothing for me yet.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. So they want to.
Make a motion, we hold over the applicant until the tenth?
Okay.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, the next application is number twelve, PGJG Holding Corp., which is Baby Moon. They emailed me late this afternoon and asked to, um, be held over to March tenth, as they don't have a new plan to submit.
I make the motion.
Well, before we go on, Ralph, just a quick question, because there was a, um, a logistical problem identified at the last meeting in terms of their engineering expert and how we were gonna handle that. I didn't know if we, uh, Anthony had any pearls of wisdom on that subject, or?
I, I, I did, I think that has gone away. Somebody got yelled at. I was, I was away for two weeks and on vacation and.
It's all, it's all.
I just went to heck without you.
All right, so, so is there somebody in the docks outside on Main Street, or?
Dunn confirmed he will not be appearing at all on that application, at all. He was just, as a friend, and he, he shouldn't have said anything, so, um, it's, it's over.
So we'll pretend it never happened.
Yes.
Okay. All right, move, uh.
Make a motion, we hold over the application till three ten?
Okay.
All in favor, aye.
All right, so the next application is number thirteen, Village Marine of West Hampton, LTD thirty-three Library Avenue. All right, so the next application is number thirteen, Village Marine of West Hampton, LTD thirty-three Library Avenue. They need to be held over to March tenth, they're still, um, messing around with the ARB.
Make a motion, we hold them over until three ten?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next application is number fourteen, West Hampton Equity Group, which is twelve twenty-two and eighty Montauk Highway, eleven Old Riverhead Road, uh, Patio Gardens, whatever you want to call it. Uh, Jim Hume submitted a request to hold them over to March tenth.
Make the motion, we hold the application over at applicant's request till March tenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Megan, did we sort out whether we're going to be live and in person March tenth, or are we still?
Yep, so you decided that that's what our plan of action is going to be. The, the emergency order, I think, is lifted, or I'm not sure what actual rule about it is, but yes, we will be going back as of March tenth to lie, to in-person meetings. Um, I will post something on the website, we also sent the public notice out with it as well. And I will notify the people of Patio Gardens and Rogers, well, Rogers isn't on it anymore, but I'll notify all the people and the points of contact to let them know that the, the meetings will be in person.
Perfect. That being.
Make a motion, we close the meeting?
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, everybody.
Have a good weekend.
Bye.
Aye.
Bye.
Bye, guys.